Okay, can we get this meeting started again, please?
Oh, no, I'm just perfectly comfortable. 106.
I think at 4,000 feet you never ever hit 100.
In fact, I might have been 11 in 106. That's just what I heard it was going to be. I didn't check my thermometer before I left.
Can we get this meeting started, please? Please take your seats.
Right when I left, it's usually the hottest part of the day, 4:30-ish.
Okay, Susan?
All right. Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak again. My name is Roy Hogard from Stockton. I brought a few samples of water-saving device that I can give out to a few people here, along with this chart on how much can be saved. This little device goes on your toilet handle or next to it, and it asks you to think about flushing. I delivered these to the Water Board, Resources Board, a few weeks ago, and Felicia Marcus says, "Hey, we need to be flushing less." They haven't picked it up yet. So, anyway, there's a little chart. I'll have some of these at the back table. One piece of paper that I have copies of. I ask, "What happened to the governor's budget of $7 million for drought awareness?" There's been nothing on television. You can brush your teeth with one glass of water, have a couple gargles and a swallow. No one knows that. They say, "Oh, don't run the water." Well, show them how. And then the last is, "Nobody wants this. This is how to build an outhouse." I have a few copies. I'll be at the back table. Thank you, folks.
And that was our entertainment for the evening. There we go. Thank you.
Hello, I'm George Burkhard. I live in Copperopolis. Several people have talked about water, so quick comment. Board of Supervisors, you are our governmental leadership. Water is extremely important. Calaveras County is actually a big producer of water for the entire state of California. We have a lot of water, but tremendous gross amounts of water are wasted. In May alone, one release mandated by the Bureau of Reclamation from New Maloney's, one release of water was enough to serve Calaveras County for 10 years. The Lake Tolic Alliance has a ton of information. I encourage every supervisor to become more knowledgeable about the gross waste of water that's occurring here. It's kind of like we gotta stop the bleeding. So, please, get more information. Join Senator McClintock and others to rid ourselves of these inflexible governmental policies put into effect years ago. Now, on the general plan. I didn't work on the general plan, but I'm dismayed to hear from so many people that so many community plans were worked on by so many people, and they were just disregarded. That's a travesty. So, I respectfully request the Board of Supervisors to investigate and find out how and why that happened, and then ensure that never happens again. And I respectfully request you direct the Planning Department to undo that harm they've done to the county overall, and specifically these affected communities. Last thing I want to talk about is flexibility. Several people have talked about flexibility, and I'll tell you from a personal standpoint. I am so fortunate to live once again in a rural area, and where I grew up was in the Catskill Mountain Area in New York State. My hometown was about the same distance as from here to Copperopolis that my hometown was from where the Woodstock Concert took place. Us locals at the time thought maybe 2,000 people might attend. The promoters thought maybe 20. That sounded crazy. How many people showed up? 400,000. When I lived back there, the biggest industry was a single-family dairy farm. They were all over the place. They don't exist anymore. Things change. You have to be flexible. If the current process that's been followed here, that I've been hearing all night about, hmm, there's a pretty large parcel, let's put it in a lockbox. I heard somebody use that phrase once. We'll call it production resource. Well, if they had done that with Max Yasker's cow pasture where Woodstock took place, I don't think there are any cows anymore. There might be a couple still. But if they had done that, followed that same process, you wouldn't have a world-class arts center, performing arts center, right there where the Woodstock Concert took place that brings in hundreds of thousands of dollars to Sullivan County, which is a county just kind of like Calaveras. Very rural, very little to no manufacturing, and they really, really need tourism. But they are flexible. They are flexible government. Something arises, they look at it at its merit, they look at it at that time, and they look forward. They're not held by some strict bureaucratic rule that was put in place that doesn't allow them to use their knowledge and do what's best for the county. So, I urge you to view flexibility in the general plan as a good thing and as a necessary thing for this county to prosper, and especially Copperopolis. Copperopolis is two, two-and-a-half hours from the Greater Bay Area. My hometown, Miles is New York, Sullivan County, two-and-a-half hours from Times Square, New York City. So, the greatest thing going on back there is the money tourists bring and leave, and then you go back to New York City. We can have the same thing here. Thank you.
I'm Donna Shans of Santa Andreas, and I want to reiterate sort of what everyone else has said to request that you include the community plans. Santa Andreas went through the same process, a very democratic process. We had numerous town hall meetings filling this hall right here to capacity. Subcommittees. We had an extensive survey that was sent out with a great response, and as a result, we drafted our 2008 community plan. And on the heels of that, we also did our Santa Andreas Mobility Plan, which was also the same process, town hall meetings, community input, and I would almost say 100% in favor of both plans. So, again, please include all the community plans. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Guaramendi from McCallamy Hill. And there's one thing that has not been mentioned about the importance of community plans, and that is that there is, because we do not have but one incorporated city, we do not have voice. We don't really have a voice as to what our towns are, or who they are, or where they are, or what they're like. And I think it's really important for us to look at our community plans as each individual's voice, or each individual's community's voice in their community plan. And therefore, people who are developing or want to come into an area, they can understand that and see whether or not that is where they want to land. So, without incorporated cities, I think we need to have community plans in our general plan. Thank you.
My name is Peter Race. I'm from Jenny Lynn, neighbor of Rancho. First of all, let me mention, elections have consequences. I was hearing it for many, many years. There's a reason you got a couple new supervisors. You got a reason why we have some new planning experts. I'd like to mention something about the proposed... I'm glad that you're suggesting to these elected officials that water quality and water rights, water rights for individuals you brought in. Water rights in California right now, they tell you one thing Friday, and they have to explain it Monday. That's not what they really meant, okay? I think you know what I'm talking about, about they're gonna take away certain water rights, old antique water rights, then two days later, they change their mind. Folks, you're under the pressure, a bunch of space cadets in Sacramento. I don't care if it's a rhino or an ass. They don't know which way is up and which way is down, folks. And unfortunately, you feel that you have to jump up and down for them. Another thing I'd like to mention, because Rancho, my district, the fifth district, been mentioned a couple of times by certain people. Folks, I don't speak behalf of Rancho, but I speak behalf of myself. I will not cooperate. I do not respect, I do not trust any... How could I put it gently? Paid agents of Caltrans, right off the bat. Caltrans sucks, folks. It's a corrupt wasteful organization. Anybody associated with it, forget it, folks. I don't care if you tell me it's daylight outside, I go out and check. Any group that's sponsored by Caltrans, forget it. And that goes also, any of these nice, wonderful, caring nonprofit stakeholders, forget it, folks. I appreciate a whole bunch of people coming out of this county, help us decide what we want and what we don't want. Well, to me, that shows total disrespect for the community. I know when I want to get up. I know when I go to bed. I can select who's gonna be my neighbor. I do my due diligence, what neighborhood I gonna be in, and I have a choice. I don't need any... I'm gonna say bimbo, bimba, but that would be maybe applicable to some folks. I want to see, you want to take care of water rights? There's one thing's missing in that proposed thing, property rights. Like it or not, folks, this may be a democratic process, but we do live in a republic, and that's been saving our butt for many years. And you guys, how much some people want to change it. We are a republic, and we do have to respect other people's right, property right, right to life, liberty. I'm just a foreigner. It's all new to me, you know? But if you buy a property for certain reasons, I don't care how many people don't like it. What's gonna be needed is not gonna be any planning director. It's gonna be changed. Money talks, BS walks, it's gonna boil down to supply and demand. If we have something here that people want, they're gonna come. And they pay the right price, they can have it, longer they don't infringe on my right. I want to see those developers be successful, because they do it on their own risk. I want to see people that want to be in a Timbuktu, don't bitch to me about you don't have a bicycle path, and don't bitch to me about you don't have Wi-Fi. That's your decision. You're not gonna create, and you're not gonna destroy water. I don't know if the water, something, the water thing that's gonna be coming up from the south, some people, it's gonna be raining like hell next, this winter. Folks, we don't know what's gonna happen. We can look back in the past and learn from it. And the opportunity for previous elected officials, they never bothered. They lived in a fantasy. I seen planning directors showing me there's gonna be 200,000 people up here. So, folks, keep it flexible. Keep it flexible, so you can make an adjustment. If we have drought for the next two years, forget it. Whatever you think is the population gonna grow, forget it. Folks, I thank you. I appreciate what you're doing. You have to put up with some unpleasantness. I'm probably one of them, but I want to thank you for your work.
Good evening. My name is Lou Mayhew. There's a bigger framework here, and I think that has to do with this county is special. It's unique geographically. It is unencumbered by the accumulation of unfortunate land use decisions and project. Treasure it, value it, and plan for it, because if you do that well, I think business will be drawn here, people will be drawn here. If you take a more laissez-faire approach, anybody can do anything with their land. You just create the potential for conflict, and I think it works against maintaining this precious gem that Calaveras County is. So, I think your land use designations are good. They serve a purpose. Those people who feel that they have been downzoned with large parcels have had and continue to have the option of asking that that be changed, so there's a process. But to go back now globally and change those land use designations to put more flexibility into big parcels to come down to five acres is exactly the wrong thing to do. I think that works against preserving the value, what draws people here, economic development of the kind you want. It works against that, so please don't do that. The level of growth, lacking a better alternative to reduce it, I urge you to keep what's been proposed, even though that's about four times more than we really should have, and you're probably gonna have to develop some infrastructure to serve that, that you don't need, and it's gonna cause problems by itself. But the thought of changing land use designations and then having to specify the infrastructure for that just seems to me, be realistic in terms of the growth of the county. And I guess, again, lacking a good alternative, what's been proposed probably makes sense. The water element, that's a tough issue. What I would say is that there are water issues, especially groundwater issues, that you're gonna have to come to grips with at some point. There are two good studies from the west part of Calaveras County that basically, based on test drilling, shows that that water is... The one USGS study said the water on the far western edge is 2,200 years to 13,400 years old, and it's not being recharged. And that's looking at carbon 14 dating, and also, there's no trace of tritium at all, which was laid down in 1957. A later study by John Environmental, and these documents are readily available, analyzed the water again from those nested monitoring wells and found the water was 5,400 years old and 18,000 to 18,900 years old. They're mining the water out there. And when that gives out, I don't know, but it's not being recharged. So, I think you need to factor that in to planning as you go. And to me, that says especially, let's not start making more five-acre parcels where everybody puts a straw in the ground. But anyway, it's a tough issue, but I think you need to be aware of that. That water, at least in those wells, which were probably 10 miles apart, is old water. Anyway, so, we have a gem here. The community plans, I think all of that speaks for itself, but in terms of growth, three to four times more than more parcels for the anticipated population that we... That isn't, and that is, that we anticipate is simply, is simply plenty. So, I don't think anybody's being hurt by the land use designations, because there are off-ramps. Thank you.
It feels like it's getting hotter in here. My voice holds out here. Good evening, Colleen Platt with MyValleySprings.com and also the Calaveras Planning Coalition. I'm not sure if I'm speaking loud enough here. Talking about what Lou just talked about, the water situation in the county, it is critical. Our county is a source of water, but we, it's not an endless source, and our groundwater is not endless. And we're, part of us are on a groundwater basin that's being drained all the time. So, we really need to take this seriously. We support having a water element in the Calaveras County General Plan. We think it's a very important part of our county's planning. The county and all water districts need to coordinate together on water for Calaveras. We do have authority over groundwater, and under the 2014 State Groundwater Management Act, we have new responsibility as a county to manage the groundwater basin in western Calaveras County. So, I would encourage you to consider putting the water element back in there. On the format of the general plan document and the options, we definitely support including a vision statement from the draft general plan introduction. It says, "Goals are intended to describe the county's ultimate vision with respect to land use," but there is no vision in the draft general plan. How can we move forward without a vision in there? We encourage you to use that 2008 draft vision that was presented. As the staff report agrees, a vision helps set the framework for the rest of the plan. We also support including measurable objectives in the plan. That's different than goals. Goals are goals. Objectives are measurable. That's something we need in there. We support including implementation program details with timeframes and the responsible departments and agencies. Without this, no one is responsible, nobody has any time goals set, and nothing will get done without having those in there. These measures would make the plan practical to implement as the general plan guidelines suggest. It needs to be practical to implement. And then to get to the hot topic of the room, community plans. We have and always will support all community plans being included in the Calaveras County General Plan. The general plan needs community plans, as speakers have told you. Alone, it does not provide the visions, guidance, and specifics for Calaveras communities. Community plans let residents know their interests are being addressed. Community plans let investors and businesses know what unique characteristics make a community attractive for investment. Community plans let developers move forward, knowing their plans coincide with the community's plan. How will this county grow without damaging the character of its unique rural communities? That question is answered by all of our community plans. We need them all. For decades, the county has been promising Valley Springs, they would get a community plan update. You've heard us talk about this for years. The community in its enthusiasm and cooperation with the county produced more than one draft community plan. Valley Springs will continue to be an area of growth where development is focused, and guidance is needed in Valley Springs. There is only one small line in the current draft plan devoted to Valley Springs. One line. The county could use compatible provisions from each of the two proposed community plans. By combining those two sets of goals, policies, and programs, a Valley Springs community plan could be crafted that broadly represents the desires of both planning groups. We do not support the "some" community plans option. We absolutely cannot count on promises to do plans later. Current supervisors and planning staff may have good intentions, but could be gone in two years. This has happened many, many times before. Promises have been made and broken later. We need to all stand together for all community plans. One for all, all for one. Thank you.
Good evening, supervisors and commissioners. My name is Muriel Zeller. I'm from Valley Springs. I'm here tonight to read a statement on behalf of MyValleySprings.com. But before I do that, I'd like to speak to the Valley Springs Community Plan from a personal perspective. I co-wrote the Caltrans grant that funded the Valley Springs Community Plan update, and I'm very, very familiar with that grant application. And I can tell you, it included letters of support from the chairman of the Board of Supervisors at that time, and also from the District One Supervisor at that time, Bill Claudina. Also, the Calaveras County Community Development Agency, which is now Planning and Building Departments, was a project partner in that plan. That process engaged an unprecedented number of residents from the Valley Springs area, and we also had unprecedented public outreach. It's extraordinary to me that you have a community plan for one of the most problematic areas in the county in terms of growth and development and planning that was made a precedent by a former Board of Supervisors, and we were told Valley Springs is a priority. And as others have said, the board told us, "Go forth and plan, Valley Springs." So, we did, except in Valley Springs, we went for the brass ring, and we got $250,000, and we created a state-of-the-art community plan for our area. And to my mind, it would be criminal for you to ignore it now. Now, I'm going to read the statement from MyValleySprings.com on level of growth. "We thank the Planning Department for looking at all available parcels for residential land use and full build-out potential, and then considering land-based constraints and housing trends to come to estimates of adjusted build-out. We note that the U.S. Census and the Department of Finance estimated only 9,000 new residents in the next 20 years in unincorporated Calaveras County. Using a conservative estimate likely to be built, Planning said the draft number three map can accommodate between 50,000 to 73,000 new residents. This is not just doubling or tripling our credible estimated growth needs of 9,000. This map adds capacity for 41,000 to 64,000 more people than what the Census and the Department of Finance projects as reality. The attachment one to the staff report, the population density calculations, shows even higher estimates of adjusted build-out. Even at reductions from 10 to 50% of maximum potential, the chart shows 48,840 additional expected housing units and 117,704 in additional population. The conclusion, land use map draft number three already has more than enough parcels for potential growth and development. Raising the level of growth even farther is not necessary or realistic, and the impacts can't be justified. Any significant increases for speculative development will force the county to plan for additional expensive and unnecessary..." for additional expensive and unnecessary road, public utility, and service infrastructure. A few speculators may gain at the expense of existing county residents who will foot the bill for unneeded infrastructure. A middle ground solution that will allow the present proposed plan to stay on track is to stick with draft #3 land use map. When it comes to specific policies in the general plan, rely upon planning staff input to refine policies so as to discourage speculative new growth for leapfrog development or conversion of agricultural lands in areas where significant quantities of vacant parcels already exist to meet demand." Thank you.
Following the suggestion of Supervisor Edson, I looked at the speech that I was going to give tonight, and now I only have one line left. And so, I will spare you all the time it would take to read the rest. After hearing testimony from everybody else, I can add very little, except to show you my binder of all the flyers, all the surveys, of all the maps we drew, of all the lists of people that attended our meetings. I'll share it with you at any time if you'd like to hear it. And then I'll conclude by saying, "We acted in good faith. Now, we are asking that you act in good faith." And before I sit down, Steve Walensky asked all the people that were from District Two to stand up, that were supporting community plans. And I just like, since it's so late and people are so tired, they might not want to stand up. But those who came here because they support community plans in their communities and worked on them, maybe they could all raise their hands, including D2 again. And let's see how many people are here for that reason. Will people raise their hands? So, I think that says something about the importance of community plans and the interest that the people of Calaveras County have in being represented in their own communities. Thank you.
I came to Calaveras County on October 2, 1977. I got hired by the Planning Department here, and I worked for the Planning Department for 10 years. I was asked by the Planning Director at that time to develop two community plans. They were the very first community plans in Calaveras County. One was in Arnold and one was in Murphy's. Community plans, I think, are so important. When I heard that they were going to exclude the community plans that literally thousands of hours and communities throughout Calaveras County had spent putting together their own community plan for their own area. People in Valley Springs, they have what they feel comfortable with. People in Arnold, what they feel comfortable with. People in San Andreas, and it goes on and on and on. I think it was, what prompted me to come here is I grew up on the island of Guam from age 14 to 22. And the people that lived across the street from me, they moved here to Calaveras County. And so, they were like a second set of parents to me. They had retired and moved here. And so, I really fell in love with this area. And I like the area. I think we have to be respectful of growth, that we need to think things through. I don't envy any of you that are on the Board of Supervisors. I know that you willingly took on this job, and I don't envy anybody that's representing your district supervisors who appointed you. It's a special job. Not everybody's cut out for it. But I have to tell you, I've lived here 37 years minus three years that I was in Bakersfield in my job as a parole agent. And it's a wonderful place to live. And I think, and I've probably gone through tremendous amount of Board of Supervisor meetings over the years, and not recently, but before, we go through the Planning Commission hearings. And I got to tell you, it's my own personal opinion. If you wanted to shoot me for it, go ahead. But I think, right now, we have the best Board of Supervisors that I have seen in years. They're more cohesive than what I've ever seen. And for the Planning Commission, it's the same thing. I mean, I, both of those entities, it's just absolutely amazing. I lived in Los Angeles before I moved here, and I lived in a city that was called Cerritos. Cerritos, before it became the city of Cerritos, it was called Dairyland. It is the only city in the United States that had bare land and they could put together a community for light industrial, heavy industrial, multifamily, commercial, all of it. They started with a clean slate. Most places, that obviously doesn't happen. But I just want to say that people just have to be patient and be calm about it. And I was reminded of that the other day by Supervisor Ponti about how we need to treat each other with respect. And I'll leave you with this one comment. I'm very Irish-looking. My mom is Irish from Boston. My dad is Pennsylvania Dutch and Indian. And when I was a kid growing up, he used to tell us all the time, "Don't judge the Indian until you've walked a mile in his moccasins." Thank you.
None? So, we'll go to Peter.
I guess it's now time for the Planning Commissioner and the Board to discuss and decide what direction you want to go on some of these issues. You certainly heard a lot of input from the public. Great to hear that. And ultimately, it's your decision which direction you want to go. You know, I'm here, work at your pleasure, and whatever direction you want to give me, I'll move forward with that. Discuss away.
Okay.
Peter, I'd like to go back to, one of the commenters talked about having to do an environment report. If those plans aren't included and they have to be redone, does an environment report have to be done? How costly is it? And even if we do updates, is that now going to apply? Is this something that we, what would have to happen with that?
Anytime the county adopts a plan or revises a plan, we need to review that action under CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. That requires that we look at the potential impacts and determine whether or not they're significant and whether or not we prepare a negative declaration or an NEIR. Yes, any amendment to the plan or adoption of a community plan would require some level of CEQA review. I think that Mr. Cox brought up a good issue that, you know, one of the concerns that was raised previously and why I believe the prior Board said, you know, "Let's not include the community plans," was the additional costs associated with completing all of those plans as a part of this plan, of the general plan. The additional time, the additional costs associated with that, and additional review to ensure internal consistency and meeting all legal requirements. If we just do a part of it now and do some later, ultimately, the cost will be more or less the same. Arguably, if we do separate documents, that could increase the cost. It's really hard to give an estimate of how much that would be at this point in time, just not knowing, you know, how many hours would be necessary and, you know, just the kind of calculations we need to do to figure that out. But there are costs associated either way we go. And I guess the question really is, is it important enough to absorb those costs now and delay the overall adoption of the general plan to include the input from the communities as a part of this plan? Or do we defer that till later with, obviously, the unknown of when we will get to it and what our resources will be at that time?
So, if we adopt the community plans now, we're going to have a serious delay to the general plan being finished?
Yes. I think it depends on how much we do. And I think that's part of the discussion that I suggested, that we, you know, look at maybe some, if not all, of the plans. But if we have to start fresh with some of the community plans, it really haven't had the year's worth of work in updating those plans or creating new ones, that will create a significant delay. Adding the District Two plans, you know, a few months, you know, a few, a little bit more costs, that's not significant in the overall cost of and timeframe that we're looking at.
Well, I was quite impressed with the District Two people that showed up here today and how much they vetted their community plans and the support they received from their community. I know there were a couple of people here from the Hathaway Pines, and I was wondering if they did town hall meetings, because I didn't hear any mention of that whatsoever. But nobody spoke to Arnold except for George, and he spoke to it before the last one was even done. And I'm not hearing anybody from Murphy's. I know, I've read through our community plans, and I see how outdated they are and how they're not fitting in. I didn't see the passion for our area to be here and support these community plans other than Hathaway Pines. So, I guess that's my question. I just wanted to know if the District Three plans were withheld and put in later, how costly it could be if we established a community group to work on them? And even if we include them now, you're still saying it's going to be costly, so the point's mute.
Yes, you're right. Pay for it now, pay for it later.
Okay, thank you.
Speaking on the question that Ms. Maturdi's just brought up, I think we heard from Mr. Walensky that the process of the community plans was the same for all the community plans in terms of the meetings and whatnot. And I thought he meant, can you nod that you meant all of the community plans or just your district?
Actually, it's neither. It was the community plans went through a process, and then this went through a similar process, all of the two ones went through that process.
Steve?
I cannot speak for...
Steve?
Yes, sir.
You're going to have to come up to the podium, because you can't be recorded back I realize that could cost us some time, but that's...
I was speaking during my presentation specifically about the seven District Two community plans. I'm also aware that San Andreas went through a similar process, and as I recollect, Valley Springs and some parts outside Valley Springs went through at least two, maybe three, separate processes, which, all of which had a wide amount of community involvement. In addition to that, Copperopolis had a series of meetings over many years that involved maybe not as big a percentage of the communities, but were well-announced and had a lot of community involvement.
Thank you.
Steve, since you're there, maybe you could share this good community and economic development news?
Oh, thank you very much. There weren't as many District Two people here tonight as would otherwise be, because the school district was having a meeting talking about whether to have a moratorium on closing all of our schools. Railroad Flat, West Point Elementary, and Moke Hill Elementary have all been on the chopping block recently in budget hearings. There was a vote tonight, four to one, to have a moratorium on up-country school closures, and that had just concluded just before I came back. So, that's a major sign of progress, and now the CUSD needs, as a whole, not to jettison some of it to save others, but to all unite around a new plan to improve their budgetary situation. So, it was a good vote.
So, do we have any more comments from any of the commissioners?
I'd like to comment that, I guess I better use the microphone. A general plan is and has to be a living document. So, once something goes into it, it's not that way forever. And so, it has to, people have to recognize that if they don't like the general plan, there's a mechanism to change it. So, it has to be a living document. That's important. The other thing I think that I'd like to mention is I don't think, I think having the community plans as part of the general plan is, in fact, a good idea certainly, and it makes it more complete. But I don't think we have to wait. I think we need to go on with what we've been doing and get it finished. And then, as community plans become available and complete, they can be woven into the network, the framework of the general plan. The other thing I thought I mentioned is, one of the more colorful people in the media that reflects on the human condition has a saying that really applies here, and that is, "Let's get her done."
I have a comment on community plans, and a couple of things. It's interesting, I didn't, there's some discussion about, you know, property rights and such, but I didn't hear from anyone in representing a community or their property that disagreed with the community plan or the land use designations that were included in their community plan. The most, one of the most difficult things of developing the community plans was exactly, was going through the land use with property owners and getting their agreement to, you know, a discussion about, you know, appropriate uses and, you know, context of the community. So, those land use maps and those community plans were vetted by the very people that lived there and owned the individual parcels. The people who live in these communities, through this very democratic process, I mean, I was very disappointed, because I spent a lot of time in the McCallum-Hale Community Plan as well, and when they were sort of dismissed. So, certainly, I'm, you know, in favor of their reinstatement and put back in the good graces of planning in Calaveras County. It's, the complex part for me is, you know, all or none, some or none. And if I, I guess if I had to decide on just some, it seems to me that a fair way to do that would be to those communities that actually complied with the county's conditions and submitted a plan within the prescribed timeframe.
Well, we've got four items to give direction to Mr. Maurer for. And with respect to the community plans, I am for community plans...
to the community plans, I am for community plans. I realize that maybe some of the plans in their current form are better than others and more complete, but conceptually, I am for them. It was suggested by somebody from Glencoe that my question regarding the involvement of an elected official meant that I didn't trust the local, the knowledge of the local people and that they needed supervision from an elected official, none of which I said and all of which is wrong. The only point that I was trying to make, I thought I made it clear, but I'll make it clear now, was that, that I think the community plans should have indeed been the product of community input, not self-appointed people, who, I don't know them, and that where, whereas communities, districts elect a supervisor, for example, then that elected person who can oversee a process, that's at least an elected official involved in the loop. Now, that's all I care about. What I don't, you know, what I couldn't countenance would be a self-appointed committee deciding for everybody else what the community's going to look like and therefore how property rights that they don't own are going to be affected. That's my point, okay? If I didn't make it clear then, I hope I've made it clear now. Also, the community plans are indeed, and somebody else brought this up, democracy in action, and I'm all for democracy in action. And I'm also for, and this is a point that was not made, I'm for decentralized government in every aspect of our lives. And this is an example of decentralized government. It's giving power to people at the local level that they would not otherwise have had. Somebody brought up the point about the fact that we only have one city, incorporated city in the county, and that the community plans kind of helps make up for that factor. That's a very good point that nobody else brought up. The woman in the black blouse with the white stripes, there she is, very good point. But you understand my comment about the decentralized government. I like that it should be a bottom-up decision-making, not necessarily top-down. And this is a good example of how bottom-up should be employed and has a chance to work. And I think regardless of the, well, not regardless, but in spite of the cost associated with the incorporation of the general plans, to deny the people their work and their involvement in the government, it would, the long-term effects on this county, I think, would not be worth the effect of denying them. What would we do? We would say, in the future, when we want people to get involved in the county government because we need the input and whatnot, then what are they to think? Here we go again? I just, the long-term cost, I don't think it's worth it. I think it's worth paying the price now and paying respect to the citizens for their work and the other reasons that I mentioned for my favoritism toward community plans. I'm not saying I favor every community plan that's drafted now, because I don't know them all by heart. I don't, I still maintain that the property rights are paramount and that community plan or no community plan, you've got to respect that. So the next item on our list is level of growth for which to plan. This is probably the hardest one to get our head around, and you heard me ask a question of Mr. Maurer as to, this is chicken and the egg thing, when somebody wants to do a project, then we have to consider what the infrastructure is available for that project, but in fact, it's the person who wants to do the projects that pays for the infrastructure. Developers told, well, you're gonna, if you want to do that, you gotta build a road, it's gotta be this specification, you gotta put in a water line, maybe you have to put in some sewer, maybe you have to put in a park, a number of things. So that's an issue for me, that I don't necessarily think that we have to say our growth limit in this general plan should be this number. I also don't think that we should be looking at 20 years or even 30 years. I think we should be looking farther ahead than that. Then, if element, if factors exist in this timeframe, this long-term timeframe, that deny growth that may have been anticipated, then so be it. The economy doesn't support it. It means it just doesn't happen. The water isn't there. Okay, then it doesn't happen. And lots of other things can happen that limit growth, but to have a piece of paper that limits the growth is unnecessary. There's all kinds of other factors that are going to do it for you. So flexibility has been brought up by a number of people, very important. The sea of green, we're talking about the sea of green and the flexibility. A number of people brought up this, the sea of green effect, and I think most of them were from copper. There's a problem in my mind, and I brought this up with planning before, with respect to the 96 map versus the number three version. And when the number three came out, the colors were changed for the various different designations. So a person couldn't look at the 96 and see and compare it to the number three and say, "What happened? What did Minter Harnish do, you know, that I agree or disagree with?" You can't do it, because the colors are all changed. You've got to go parcel by parcel and see what happened. Some people have almost done that, and that's where they, where they're coming up with this concept of the sea of green, and I'm with them on that. For the same reasons that I mentioned before about the growth, if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, and there are all kinds of factors that are going to drive that. A gentleman from Paloma informed us that Paloma was the first subdivision in California. How many knew that? I didn't know that. Nobody, okay? If the sea of green existed then, Paloma would not exist. So I'm for flexibility. I'm for longer-range outlook. I'm for a flexible, I'm for going back toward, at least toward, the 96 map, because, and for another reason. When we talk about the population growth projections, and some of these numbers are very large, understandably, I don't know how long it would take us to get to those numbers. The numbers aren't so important. A population projected growth, as it is to me, what kind of living are we talking about? Because if that growth that's projected is in large part a result of somebody doing the math with respect to high-density housing, is that the kind of growth we would want? If we had that right now, would it be consistent with Calaveras County, the character of Calaveras County, right now? I would, I say no. It's not consistent. It violates the character of the county. Someone mentioned, I can't remember who, about keeping the sea of green, because that's why people move here. No. People move here because they can put a place on a five-acre parcel from the city that they hate and that they're glad to be rid of and out of. That's why they move here. It's the character of our county, and it's a good thing. So that's another reason I'm saying we gotta go back closer to what was allowable under the 96 map, in my opinion. Let me go through, I think I've covered that area, and that's, that's the tough one, folks. That's the tough one. The community plans, in my opinion, are easy compared to that one. Inclusion of the water element, it was suggested that we, there was one that was submitted. I haven't seen it, but I have a, the question, this is gonna be kind of a rhetorical question for planning. If a water element would help protect our water rights from those who would suck them up, then I'm all for a water element. By all means, a water element. Format of the plan, I think the only comment that I had about that was with respect to language, yeah, needs to be understandable and whatnot, it's simple, that everybody can kind of relate to. Vision statement, yeah, I'm for vision statement. There's been a couple of submissions, people have suggested some inclusions to that. In particular, and I'm one of them, that inclusion that had to do with respect for property rights, which I thought was far too absent from the Minter Harnish version. And speaking of which, I've got big X's through the Minter Harnish versions of their vision statement. I would say hell no. I guess that's all I have to offer. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, on the community plans, I think I like the staff recommendation, which is, include the ones that can be included now, provide a path for others that can't be included now, because they're not nearly ready to become such if people want. I have to assume that the Board of Supervisors will have the ability to make changes in community plans, to make them consistent to the extent legally required with the other parts of the general plan. On the growth, I tend to agree with Commissioner Toono. I think a part of this will be handled when we get to specific land use designations. Castle and Cook being a good example. In other words, it doesn't seem to be fair to say, "Your application's complete, but we can't deal with it, because we don't have a general plan," and then say, "Well, here's our draft general plan, we just downgraded you." I don't think that's right. I think some of the growth issues will be handled if community plans are included, which themselves deal with the land use issues in those communities. On the water element, I think I agree with Commissioner Toono on that one, too. If inclusion of it helps protect water rights in this county, fine. Otherwise, I think that it's probably best handled the way it is now. Under other elements, not, that shouldn't imply that I don't think water's important. I think it is the most important issue we have in this county, quite frankly, and that's both groundwater and surface water. What the general plan ought to do about it, if anything, is a different question. On the format, I am not in favor of including a vision statement, on the theory, if you don't need it, why do it? On the theory that when you say nice-sounding things in a vision statement, you increase the risk that somebody's gonna say down the road that other provisions of the general plan are inconsistent with it, or they will insist that other provisions be interpreted according to what's in the vision statement. I, too, have great difficulties with the Minter Harnish version of a vision statement. Objective, objectives that are measurable, probably not a good idea. What happens if you can't get it done? Should implementation programs follow policies, and does every policy need an implementation program? I say no to both of those. Same problem. If you create a general plan that, in some respects, is kind of a collection of really specific things, and then you can't follow through on it, to me, that's a recipe for I think that covers my comments.
Yes, please. I think that my questions around if we have to do the environmental reports basically was looking at our, in District Three. I really feel that the community plans that have been put together, that have worked on by the communities, need to be included. District Three does have some plans, but I would like to see that those be updated, because some of them are so restrictive to property rights that I'm dealing with constituents right now that are saying, "Because of the community plan, I've owned this property and I can't do anything with it." I think that's wrong. So I would, I would like to see the District Three community plans be updated. If they're going to be included, then I think that we need to put a timeline on getting those updated. I think that the community plans are an important process in everybody in this county. As far as maintaining the level of expected and planned for growth, I, when these, when these maps originally came out, I kept saying, "Where's the map that shows whose parcels have been changed? Can we get APN numbers of everybody's parcels that have been changed?" And instead, what the county voted to do was send out a postcard and let people reply to that. I think that the draft plan number three, and David kind of referenced it, trying to break it down, do a comparison, find out who's losing their property rights, who's not gonna be able to do with their property what their intended purpose is. I'm more apt to say, "Let's go back on the map." I don't, I think just the draft number three is just far too restrictive. Adding the water element, I think we need to hold off on adding that water element. Water is super-important to us, but I'm not sure that our general plan is where that water element needs to be. If somebody's gonna build or do something, and we're all concerned about this drought, we're all concerned, is building gonna stop because we don't have the water? It could, but that's gonna happen at the water company level, not at the county level. Anybody can apply for a permit through our county, but then they have to go to whatever water district is the managing agency, they're gonna make the determination whether they can supply that water. So I think we need to hold that, hold back on the water element and adjust the format of the plan by including the vision statements. I'm okay with vision statements. I think vision statements are good. I don't like the one that's been written here, agreeing with everybody else, guiding principles prepared in 2008. It kind of goes with the vision statement, and I don't think adding objectives is a good idea. I think that you've pretty much said that well. So I, that's kind of what my stance is at this point, so. That's all yours. Thank you.
So on the community plans, I've pretty much expressed my recommendation as far as inclusion, certainly the inclusion of the community plans that met the, complied with the timeframe of the county's mandate way back in 2006, and certainly allowing and paving the way and perhaps, you know, a template and working with the other communities who want to prepare a community plan, and then folding them in when they're ready. On the growth issue, wow, you know, 9,000 people versus planning for 45,000 to 70,000 people, that's, it's, to me, that's mind-boggling. I, you know, it's, if, it's, my opinion is too much, but I'm obviously in the minority there. On the water element, water is critical and it's important. Whether it needs to be its own separate element or not, I, you know, I'm flexible with that, but certainly there, I think, are measures and recommendations and programs that could be put in place that would strengthen our, and the importance of water in the general The format, you know, to me, it's like, we're not even talking about a format. You know, format's how you arrange things. To me, we're really talking about what's missing in this general plan, and that includes, I agree, the vision and the guiding principles, and I, it wasn't Minter Harnish who came up with that. Minter Harnish took the hours of community input from people that participated in county-sponsored workshops, and they fashioned that based upon what they heard. So, you know, I think, you know, it is reflective of the consensus of the people in this county through that workshops and public participation process. Objectives, you know, really, how can you have a, we're talking about a business plan without objection, measurable objectives. You know, it's like you hear the saying, "People work to their comp plan." You know, we'll all be working, you know, to our comp plan, and so will the county with this general plan, which is really the, you know, certainly the, kind of the bible for future growth and development. So, how can you really do that if you don't have at least some milestones? I don't think we need to be afraid that we might not meet every milestone. Lots of businesses don't meet their milestones, but that doesn't mean that they don't still put out a target for people to try and strive for. So, I think it's critical that there be measurable objectives in this plan. And one last thing, it's like, it's a general plan, yes, I mean, so you want to be flexible, but it shouldn't be a vague plan. You know, it should, it should be certainly something as a working document that provides enough information to people have a, have an expectation about what can and can't, you know, could not occur in a particular area, so. I think that wraps it up for the, I think, Planning Commission.
Okay. Okay. So, who wants to start off with the board?
Guess I'm at the end of the line, huh?
Usually it's Debbie, but you're down there now, Steve.
(LAUGHING) What happened? I want to tell everybody, thanks for being here. It was a very crowded room. There was a lot of different opinions stated. It was very orderly. It's great to have that much participation. I tease everybody after six months, I know everything, but the fact of business is, we learned a lot tonight by listening to you, and I do appreciate it, and I thank you for being here. The first requested action was decide whether to include the community plans. I think we have an absolute mandate to include them. The community plans have, we have a great many, if you looked at the map that we were provided with, if you could see it, it was really very small, but a great many of them are already well-vetted and will take very little tweaking to include in the general plan. And as far as, if you could see on the map, the other different colors, a very few, a few more of them will need a little more work, but my thinking is, if we can have a way of, oh, I can, kind of like a parking lot, I could see where the ones that are ready to go, we get them in right away, and then the next ones to come, they've got a little bit of a time limit on them, and maybe we go back to the communities that were working on them just to make sure they still want them, but they wouldn't be excluded. And I know there were, there are a lot of people that said, "Well, but this gets forgotten," but I don't think that it will if we say, "This community plan comes in by this date, and we push it to come in." It's sort of like a handshake under agreement, and it's in the general plan, and when it does come in, there has to be some flexibility, so we might could tweak what was in that suggested community plan that's coming in. When we did, there was a couple of comments about the Rancho special plan. I worked on the Rancho special plan in December, November, December, and January with a group, and it is an extremely historical document that's been around for a long time. In fact, one of the members that was on the committee had served on it from the very first one, so it was really, it was really an interesting experience and learned a lot. What we did with the Rancho special plan, and I would tell this to everybody who's involved in the community plan, when we got the first draft in, I haven't even worked on it with me, we went through and we pulled out the major points of the Rancho special plan and made sure they were reflected in the general plan draft, with the intention of, we're still preserving the Rancho special plan, but we also got them in the general plan draft. And I would tell everybody with a community plan, to take the general plan draft, find your major points, make sure that they're in there, with the intention of still putting the community plan in it. I do believe in them, I believe it's a reflection of the people, and even more so, this is a 20-year document. Let's face it, we're creating history for people to come after us. They need to be able to pull those, as far as I'm concerned, and look at them and say, "Hey, this is what my old man worked on," you know, "And what are we going to do in our community? This is a good stepping point for what we do going forward," and I do believe in that. Determine the level of growth for which the county should plan over the next 20 years. 21 years ago, Calaveras County was the eighth fastest-growing county in the state of California. I knew that because I was doing my business demographics almost daily. Now, since the census in 2010, our population's been dropping. I really appreciate the map that was put up, and it's designed, unless I'm mistaken, to, in addition to the 40,000 people, to take another 73,000 and some change here. I can appreciate that, and if that's what we want to say, good, good, but what happens in 18 years if we get to 120,000 people? Do we put a sign up at the county line that says, "We're closed"? You know, I don't think, I think that it's good to say, "We've got growth, we've got a map and a plan that says we're going to grow," but by the same token, there's got to be some flexibility in that. We may not grow a lot without developing some of the economic attractors that bring people here, and I sure hope that we don't go to the other direction too much more, because we do need people here to keep our infrastructure developing. But I would say, as far as the growth goes, I'm good with the map that's provided and the growth that it will accommodate, but there's going to have to be flexibility, because I can't predict what's going to happen in 18 years, let alone 20. Decide whether to include a water element. If you read the grand jury report that was just put out, there is a disconnect between the county government and the water, the various water boards that are in our county, and we really need to change that. I have to say, that has already begun. We have a great group, talking to some of the CCWD experts recently, they're bringing together a various group of people, they're starting to work on it. I'm not aware of, David and I passed a note, because I could scratch in my head, when a water element was presented, I couldn't figure it out either, so if there was one, it went by me. I think we need a parking space on our general plan to add a water element to it. It's already, a lot of the factors are already being worked on, and it's, I don't think it's going to be a difficult thing to add that. It will come because it's already in progress, and I'm very confident of that. Discuss and provide direction regarding format. You know, the Mentor Harnish statement is a very well-written statement, but people see those and they just don't read the whole thing. Somehow, we need to make a more condensed, powerful statement that says who we are and what we're trying to do, and do it in fewer words, and maybe use what's there or so forth, but to me, it's not effective to read the whole thing. One tool, and I don't know if we can get it before the Planning Commission really goes into their deliberations with this, Director Maurer is, is it possible to get an overlay map that goes over, like the map that you presented, of the old, of what we currently have compared to where we're going? I realize that you can go through, and if it's your lot, you probably do know what a change might be, but when you're looking in general, that's like putting together a jigsaw puzzle, and you're trying to consume it all, and it might be a good tool going forward as the Planning Commission deliberates over what they're going to do with it. Just a thought. I don't know if it's possible, but I know I'd sure like to see it, because I've been to many of these presentations where all these maps are put up, and you're swimming by the time you get to the third one, and then somebody throws in a fourth one, and you're really lost. What I, if I could see what we are currently dealing with, and it was overlaid with that, I could see the changes that are coming, it might make more sense to myself and a lot of people.
It wouldn't be a direct apples-to-apples comparison, but we could come up with something that has a clear way to compare the changes.
Yeah, like a clear overlay that you put on it, even if it's a general.
There are different land use designations between the old plan and the proposed one. Doesn't mean that's the way it's going to have to be, but we could come up with something that sort of shows better, you know, the changes. We could do that for the commission.
I probably won't say as much tonight as I normally would, so I'll try to collect my thoughts and share. First of all, I want to thank everybody that is still here at this hour, and for those who were here much earlier this evening. So, it was a nice turnout, and I think I appreciated the community responses and the input. And Peter, to you and your staff, I thank you for getting us to this point. You know, you, like a few of us up here, we've only had a short time on this, and there's been many years in the works, so I just thank you for getting us to this time. I, when I take a look at originally and discussions of the general plan, you know, I was hoping to keep it like real general, because I think the more, the more text, information can kind of strangle you as you're looking at your plans for the future. I represent from Copropolis to Vallecito area and the outskirts of Angels Camp and such, and Vallecito doesn't have a community plan, and they kind of want to keep it that way. Douglas Flat doesn't have a community plan. I'm not quite sure if they want a community plan or not. So, I really, when I look at my district, Copropolis has tried for many years to get something, I think, to the approval level of the Planning Commission, and has been unable to do so. So, I'm looking forward to, I'm okay with including the general plans that have been approved at some point, whether it's been the approval process of the Planning Commission, because there was a direction given, and many people rallied and were, was able to describe and take a look at what they wanted their specific community to look like, and I respect that and would want to support those particular plans being included. Much like what my counterpart supervisor, Kearney, mentioned about a parking lot, as we look at future, some of those plans, i.e. Copropolis, you know, making that a priority of moving ahead, if that's truly what the community of Copropolis would like to do in formalizing their community plan, and maybe Vallecito and Douglas Flat will want to come along with that. But I really think flexibility is very important. I've seen things in government where you can have so many words and texts and strangulations, it just strangulates you where you can't do anything. And, you know, I've just been dealing with fires, and it's even hard for firefighters to go in and put out a fire the way they know how, because of all the regulations that strangles them from putting out the fire. Somebody mentioned control burn and fire service and those kinds of things, and I almost can bet you that 10 years ago, working on that plan in the halfway pines area would be very different today with the regulations that have come forth. So, I really look at, I'm okay with adding the general plans that have been approved to a certain process, and those who want to, i.e., update, I know in District 3 and such, you know, those should be a priority, and I'd like to see us, you know, provide some form of leadership and support. I know that years past, some communities had maybe more planning support or supervisor support in their particular districts, and so I would hope that we could come up with something that we can be supportive of all of our communities, kind of on an equal playing field, developing our community plans. As for water, I don't think the general plan at this point is maybe the appropriate place for the water element, and I say that because the county can only control the groundwater and surface water. We have seven to eight different water districts throughout the county. In the past, they haven't even been able to agree on much. There is a change. We're moving forward to a little bit more collaboration, so I see that as kind of a parking lot item, too, to perhaps add to the general plan as we get this one done, looking at a water element of sorts, because we have a lot of players out there, and I think that's where the county has fallen down in the past, is being, kind of taking a project and thinking they're the only one on the project, when there's so many more other facets with water that we need to be inclusive and invite our sister, brother agencies to the table to look at that water element overall. I know there's work that's been done in the past, so maybe we can pick up from there and move forward. As for the vision statement, you know, as I read this, I like it, I think it's a little wordy, but I really think that it truly reflects what I know communities are saying of what they want. I hear most times the history of the gold rush and open space. I mean, you know, we talk about why people move here, they like the open space, and I think we have to be careful on where we put our housing and our retail and our commercial and our industrial and that sort of thing, or we won't have the open space that we all value and treasure. But I do like putting something along in there, maybe it can be less wordy, but I think it truly reflects the sentiments of what I heard here tonight in a lot of different ways, and I'm sure from these community meetings and such. As for the numbers on growth, somewhere in between, I struggle with that map, too. It's hard for me to say, you know, that 40,000 to 70,000 people, I know it's a 20-year plan, but at this rate, it's probably more like a 50-year plan, so maybe that 40,000 to 70 is appropriate. But I think we're on the right track. I certainly think the Department of Finance numbers aren't fitting for our general plan, so hopefully we can tweak that a little bit. But like Planning Commissioner Truano mentioned, too, you know, despite the number, it's the infrastructure that's going to really determine what we can grow, you know, whether it's a water issue, a road issue, or whatever it might be. So, you know, I don't want to hang everything up on a number of that growth, but I know going into an EIR and things like that, they're going to take a look at that number, so I think we have to consider a number, but I also, you know, hopefully have some balance with that, because I know in Copropolis, when they talked about numbers, you know, three years ago, there were three developments that had been, you know, approved by the Board of Supervisors for development, and, you know, right now, they're all in a state of flux, and who knows? And that could really change the numbers of Copropolis in regards to future growth projections and such. So, I think we have to really take a look at that and see, you know, hopefully be more reflective of the growth there. Those are my comments.[1646.21][1646.21](APPLAUSE).
Well, it's almost 10 o'clock, so, you know, I'll only be a couple hours now. Just a few things to say, kind of go back to my history and talk about the beginning of time, and the meaning of life is really important to me. So, just, you know, get comfortable. So, I'd just like to say, it's really refreshing to see all the community input today, and I think that we've found one thing almost all of us can agree on, and that is the community plans. I mean, I knew this to be true in District 2. You know, if you look across the board of who supports and who worked on the general plan and the community plans in District 2, you'll see people with incredibly diverse political backgrounds and opinions on everything, and, I mean, really completely polar opposites when it comes to anything outside of their communities. And they all came together to work out the community plans and produce a product on time, and to be then rejected somehow was astounding to me, and so I'm really happy and thankful that everybody was able to come out and express that. And it seems like it's true for across the county, too. You know, there's not a lot of agreement, from my standpoint, with what people want in Copropolis as far as the growth and development there. I disagree. I don't think there should be a lot of growth and development in Calaveras County. But what I do see is that people want to have say in their communities, and they want to be able to develop their own community plans, and that is what we can all agree on. So, I'm absolutely, always have been, always will be, 100% supportive of community plans, and so I'm happy to see that moving forward. And I think it's a good idea to put in the ones that exist right now in the current update, and then have a specific timeline, measurable benchmarks included, when we're going to update the next ones, and so we can come back, "Oh, did we, you know, how are we doing on that Copropolis community plan? You know, we were going to do that this year, and where are we at?" And if we decide, the new board decides, a future community decides they don't want it, they can get rid of it, but we have to have a timeline for those other community plans. And like I said, on growth, I And like I said, on growth, I think that, you know, I like Calaveras County the way it is right now. I don't want to see it turned into something that it's not, and I think that most of us in this room agree with that. You know, Castle and Cook, as far as I'm concerned, can go back wherever they came from and take all their millions of dollars. I mean, that's my personal opinion, that's the opinion of almost everybody in my district. Not everybody, I know there's a few. But, but, but really, that's, that's, that, that's my opinion on, on growth. And so what I think we need to do is look at what we want to be in Calaveras County, and what I think I want us to be is what we are now, with just a, with a little bit more better planning, that, and we're headed in the right direction. But we can't go back to that other old map in ninety-six, where you had these five-acre ranchettes everywhere drawn sporadically. There's no way any of us want to see that happen. And so let's, let's get rid of that idea completely. It's, it's not going to ever happen in, in any of our lifetimes, and so let's not try to plan for something that's not going to happen. So I think we should actually continue to look at realistic numbers for our growth. Like Debbie was just saying, in Copropolis, we've been talking about, oh, Copropolis is going to have forty thousand people. Well, when is it going to have forty thousand people? I mean, there's no growth happening down there, so let's stop planning for something that's not going to happen. However, that said, if you guys in the Copropolis community plan want to continue to, you know, plan for forty thousand, that's, that's fine. But I would like to see the growth contained down in Copropolis and not sprawled all over District Two. So that's my most important concern, is leaving District Two under the control of District Two, and you guys can build your, your dreams down in Copropolis. So as far as the water element goes, I would say that the water element is a necessity. We had one, I didn't think it was that good, but at least we had one in the works, we have a draft one. Let's build on that, it's the most reasonable thing in the world, is to have a water element. We don't have to have it, if we don't want to do an element, we can have all the goals and policy and implementation measures within the general plan, and we can, you know, it doesn't have to be a standalone element, as long as we have all, we, we analyze where our water's coming from, how much we're using, and, you know, and that goes right to growth. I mean, we're talking about Lake Tolic up here, you guys stand up here and they say there, all the water's leaving Lake Tolic, and there's no, there's no water for Lake Tolic, and yet we're going to be talking about building forty thousand homes down in, in that area. Well, where's that water coming from? So we have to have a water element to look at the realistic of where and how we get that water for that planned growth. That's why you have a water element, so you have planned growth. And, and I know that people won't agree with me on that in Copropolis, but you know what? That does bring a point I wanted, I've been meaning to bring this up. And that is, is that when you look at the history of New Maloney's, go back and look at one of the strong arguments for building the larger dam that we have now, was that that water was going to be used in-stream, downstream from the dam and out of county for fisheries and recreation. That was one of the strongest arguments supported for that dam. It was, you look it up, read your history there, and, and you'll see. Well, yeah, well, you, you were there, but you don't know what, what actually happened. So go back and read it, and you'll find that that was a big argument for that water going downstream. So let's not have a one-sided story where it's just about water for Lake Tolic. Let's talk about the history of that and, and the future of that in our water element. Well, and the farmers, yes, the farmers were a big part of that, absolutely, yes, but also recreational flows and fisheries.
This is the time for us to speak. All right, so let's, let's let us do that respectfully.
So, and then as far as the format goes, I think we should add, let's see you guys there. I think we should add a vision statement, absolutely. We should add objectives, we should move implementation programs following each policy, we should create implementation measures for each policy, and provide a timeline for each measure. If we don't do that, we're just going to have vague goals out there and vague policies. Why have we spent this much time and money? I mean, to, to do what? We might as well not have a general plan. I mean, that's another option, we could just not have a general plan. That's all I have to say.
All right, so it's my turn now.
People do what they want. Oh, I know, this is a good point.
So, community plans. I'm good with adding community plans that are completed and ready to go in. I'm good for working on community plans for the future and adding them. But if they're not ready now, then, if they're not ready, so we'll just have to, we'll just have to work on that. The growth level, I think we need to be flexible with the growth level. I could tell you that we've been, you know, our county's been evacuated with people here lately. We have less and less of the younger families here, and they're leaving, and you could see it by reflection in our schools, and, and the students that go to our schools are getting less and less, and so that means we have less and less of those young families that can't find work here and jobs. So I think we need to be flexible on the growth level. I'm not, I'm not sure if draft number three does it. But I could tell you that probably by most of the community plans that are going in out there, it's pretty, pretty much going to depict what, what gets done there anyhow. So I like to be more flexible on growth, and I look at growth a little bit differently than a lot of people. I think that growth is not just people, I think it's also industries. We need to grow our industries, and agriculture being one of them, and so if you're going to, I, I don't want to, any four-lane highways, you know, running through Calaveras County if we, if we can help it, but we certainly need to be able to provide industries for people to work. And so water is, is pretty big on that. You know, the state's going to be after our water rights if we can't prove that we can use it, and they're already going after everything they can. So I think it's really important that we try to maximize our potential for, to, to keep as much water rights as we can through growth. Not quite sure how we do that, because I'm not a, I'm not a planner guy, so I think Peter kind of knows what I'm talking about. Okay, so I believe that the community's done a really good job on, on the community plans. They worked really hard at it for a lot of years, for many reasons. Some, a lot of it was for, I'm sure, for, you know, to develop their communities for the future, and they want to keep it that way, even though they won't be here, you know, more than forty or fifty years from now. So hope you have some young people around that could appreciate that. But, but it, you know, if that's what they choose to do, that's great. I think that people should live in a place where they feel comfortable and, and want to live. Water element, I think that, I don't, I don't think we need to put a water element in right now, because we don't have one. I believe that the water agencies that are coming together right now with the county can develop a water element, and that's where I think it needs to be. I don't, so I know they don't have a completed one. I do know that Highway Four Water Agencies and CCWD have been meeting, Supervisor Ponte has been involved in that, and the county is getting more involved with water agencies, and so I think in a future time, we should, we should probably develop something that could go on into the general plan for that, but it's, I can't see it happening now, and I, I don't want to hold up the general plan to wait for that to happen. As far as the general plan goes, I think we need to keep it as general as possible. It gets, a lot of times it gets weighted down with landmines, and I don't think we need that. I think we need to move forward on it. Some people were saying, blaming, you know, supervisors for, how come it's taken us so long? How come it's taken us so long to get this general plan completed? Well, take a look around, and you might find the reason. So we want to move it forward, and we don't want to delay it, so why don't we do that? Suggested components, vision statement. I don't agree with the vision statement for Minter Harnish, don't like it at all, actually. But, you know, what do I know? I don't like anything that has to do with taking away somebody's property rights, actually. So if we can come up with a vision statement that truly reflects our county as a whole, and that doesn't mean twenty-five percent of it, that means one-hundred percent of it, and that means the silent majority of the folks that are not here tonight, the folks that I represent in my district as well, that have, you know, that contact me on almost a daily basis, then I say, yeah, we can develop a vision statement. I think it's important that when somebody looks at the county, that they can go to a vision statement and get an idea on what that looks like. So I actually talked to a lot of people, not just a few people, and so I got a pretty good, pretty good consensus on the whole picture, and that's why I recommend what I do. Measurable objectives? It is very hard to get anything done in government, I got to tell you. It takes forever to do things that I could do in a day in my, in my own business. Very, very difficult to get things done, for many reasons. There's a, there's, there's a process for everything, and the processes need to be followed. If we don't follow the processes, then, you know, a bunch of bells and whistles go off, right? So if we need to change those processes, then that's what we need to do, but until then, I don't think measurable objectives will work. Implementation measure for each policy? No, I don't think so. Timeframes for each implementation measure? No, thank you. We just need to get this thing done and get the, the community plans in that are ready. Those folks worked really hard on their community plans, they deserve that. They need to get their community plans in our general plan. I, you know, even though, you know, like Peter said, it's a wash as far as cost goes, and it's going to be a couple of more months extra. That's a couple of more months extra that they're working on something, that they're taking away from something else, so it's not a wash. It's going to cost extra money to put those community plans in the general plan. I think that it's worth it. It's, it's worth it to the folks that are here that, that have spent all these years on it, and I didn't spend all these years on it. I spent some time on San Andreas Community Plan, on, and on the, San Andreas Mobility Plan. I spent some time on that, not as much as a lot of people. But I think people put their heart and soul into these plans, and I, I believe that, I believe that, I believe they know what they want, so I think that's just fine. So I heard people talk about economic development in here, about how it's important. I haven't seen it. I hear a lot of people talking about economic development, I see a lot of people fighting against it. So where is it? If you want to rely on tourism, that's like riding a roller coaster. Tourism comes when people have discretionary income, and it's not here when they don't. And if you don't believe me, come and run my restaurant. Nobody thinks about the people that are investing their lives here, and their time here, and everything that they own here. They don't think about that, because they got their own agenda. So I'm representing the people that actually work here and try to live here and invest their whole lives here. That's important to me. I also heard one for all and all for one. Who's paying my bills? All for one? Who's paying my property taxes? Me, I'm paying it. And I'm paying a lot more taxes besides that, too. So I am interested in getting our communities operating in a balanced situation where we have an economy, we take care of our environment, we take care of our people. It has to be balanced. It's not going to be done by angry people, by threats, by mobs. It's not going to happen that way. It's got to be done by collaboration, people working together. That's the way it has to be done. Otherwise, you get people walking out of the room. We don't want that. We're supposed to be neighbors here, working together. So put down the wall a little bit, put down your, you know, swords, and start working together. That's the way we got to get things done. And I will never ask anybody to leave a community, ever. So policies and goals, kind of remind me of succession planning. You know, we have to, we have to plan for succession as well. We can plan for now, have our community plans for now, and that's great, but we also have to think of the future and beyond ourselves. All for that. So I'm hopeful that, that we can consider that when we're putting these community plans into the general plan, and the general plan in specifically. The succession planning is really important. If you don't believe me, just take a look at the baby boomers that came up here that bought their two-and-a-half acre little places, got to live up here for ten years, and then, and now, you know, one of them got ill or sick, or, and there's one left, and, and their, their property becomes burdensome to them. They didn't plan for succession, they didn't plan for the future. And we need to do the same thing here. This county is not going to be here just for another twenty years, or thirty years, or fifty years, it's going to be here forever, and we need to be thinking of that and good Okay, so I guess, I hope, hopefully I got some of my points crossed. I know families that I've known here for more than forty years. I grew up with some folks that live here in the, in the county since I was five years old, and I've watched the deterioration of our county over the years. We went from a thriving industrial county environmentally, kind of crazy, I admit, you know, but there were a lot of families, folks working here. Families were... Families were good, strong families. And now, they're being torn apart by poverty and destruction of their property, destruction of their rights, and drugs, and alcoholism, and all the things that come along with not allowing good, healthy, balanced growth to happen. And I, I am hopeful that we can move more in that direction. And that requires us working together. So, I guess I answered all the questions. Community plans? Yes, the ones that are ready. Level of growth? Flexible. You can, you can say 100,000 people can come here next week and they're not gonna come for 30 years because nobody wants to move here. Try to get a doctor to come here. They don't wanna come. Well, doctor will come here, but the wife don't wanna come. So, you know, well, it's true. I mean, I've already, I've talked to the people, the administrators in the hospitals that, that have seen that, so. Or the wife comes, but the husband didn't wanna come because there's not enough road racing around or something, I don't know. But, point is, is it's, it's very difficult to get, you know, it takes people that wanna come up here, very special people that, that wanna come up here, especially when they have those options that can be more fruitful elsewhere when it comes to money and, and their lifestyle. I personally don't like malls and, you know, I don't have to go to a mall but once a, about half as much as my wife, actually. But, you know, maybe once every two months. So, I don't think we have to worry about that too much. Vision statement? I'd like to develop one, but I think it should be us that develops it. And the water element, again, I think the water agencies in the county could get together and develop a water element. That's it. So, I guess the thing, Debbie, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions. Peter, can you clarify on this working vision statement and guiding principles? It says down here that it was input from the community groups and workshops and that sort of thing. Is that, is that true or is this mentor or whatever that I can hear?
I, I have to take their word for it. I wasn't here. I came across that it was recommended that I look at that by someone from the public. I pulled that out and said, you know, here is, here is a draft. I don't know what happened, you know, how it developed or where it went from there.
All right. And then, the other thing I wanted to add, I, I misread my notes here. As for the format, I agree. I, I'm looking at more what's inclusive, but, you know, I think it is important to have some sort of ma, goals, measurable goals. I don't know if goal is the right word, but, and a timeframe and like who might be responsible for this, you know, because I do look at this as a business plan for the county and some accountability as to which direction we're going with this and how we, you know, want to get there, how we might want to get there. And, you know, if we don't, if we don't make that deadline, maybe there's justification as to why, but I think for me, it's important to have something in writing so that we, we have a direction to move towards. So, that, I missed that on my comments.
Can you, can you do a recap then on, did you get enough direction, Peter?
Well, no, I was, my next request was actually if we could have motions and votes on each of these items because, you know, it's, there's been some general consensus on some things, other things have been pretty much, you know, wide variety of, and I think part of the problem that I was facing earlier was, you know, in the issue with the community plans, there was no vote taken on it. It seemed general consensus at the time. A lot of people disagreed with that. And so, it'd be really great to have very clear direction from the board through a motion and vote on, you know, which communities to include. You know, all of the issues that I've raised would help tremendously for me to be able to move forward from here.
You're looking for a motion?
Yes, please.
We can't, you know, we have to hold off for a second and let County Council figure that one out.
It may not be a motion. It might just be a, a general direction from each of us that's a little bit more specific. Is that what you're asking for there, Cliff? That's what I mean. Is that what you're asking them to clarify?
Since it's a study session and I don't know if it was an actionable study session, so we have to find out. I know we can give direction, but...
Right, we can just give more specific direction.
This item was agendized as a study session and in study sessions typically it's handled by a, a general poll without a formal motion to be made. It is for direction only. It's not a formal motion with, with a vote, so it would be a poll and then a majority of the poll would be the direction that staff takes.
Okay, we can do that. So, I'll take a poll on the community plans being included into the general plan. And I'll start with Supervisor Kearney.
Those that are ready, put them into the, the general plan. And I suggested having a parking space for those that are to come.
Okay. Is that, is that good with you, Peter?
That's what I heard from Supervisor Kearney.
I would agree with Supervisor Kearney.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Suggest, suggested components? So, the first one is vision statement?
So, you're gonna go to...
I'd like a point of order here. What the heck did that mean? Which ones are ready? Which ones aren't ready? I mean, we came here for some clarity.
There was a map up there and it showed the ones that were ready to go. I, I mean, I don't know whether that was handed out back there.
All right, that's a good point, so we can define that.
Or we can ask Peter if that's, I mean, if he feels comfortable with that direction.
I will, okay, then, maybe I can make a suggestion. I would say that I would be in favor of the community plans to be included, the ones that our planning director feels that are ready to enter into the, into the general plan.
So, I guess for clarity's sake then, what, what I heard from most of the board was that all those in District Two, San Andreas, Rancho Calaveras, to me, those would be definitely in. A question I think is, that is really been raised is, do we want to proceed with Valley Springs and Copperopolis today? I think that the highway four plans, you know, clearly aren't ready to go, so that's, I think those two are the bigger issue.
There's also Wallace.
And Wallace.
Yeah, which is ready.
Okay.
I think it's on that map right there. It is so small on our copies, but it says mostly complete on the legend. And that's what you're referring to.
So, the, the two that were, I mean, I, yeah, unfortunately, this didn't really come out very well. I didn't have a chance to vet it before. But, again, District, District Two, San Andreas, Wallace, and Rancho are, could be easily incorporated in the plan. We could also include Copperopolis and Valley, Valley Springs, but it will take more work and more time. And I guess that's the question I have of you, do you want to do that or put those in a parking lot and work on them afterwards?
Well, I, I would be in favor of putting them in a parking lot, but I'd like to put a timeline on that because I don't wanna just put them in the parking lot and then, you know, forget about them. I think it's important that we, we take care of them, so put a time horizon on that. That's my opinion.
No, and that, and that was suggested by several of us, so it's not, yeah, we agree. Should be handled in a timely manner.
In my understanding, the ones that were to be included have been vetted through the planning commission and at some point voted on the planning, voted one way or the other by the planning commission. I mean, I don't see making you responsible for determining which plan was approved or not.
Oh, you wanna take them off the hook?
But those sound like a good grouping, right? I mean, the ones that just...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I think the direction is clear on that one. The next issue then is the growth. I heard sort of mainly flexibility, I'm not sure exactly what that means. I think that as a starting point, we will take the draft number three, but there, there will be a number of requests that the planning commission will review over the next several months of people that would like to see changes for their land use designation. And I think the commission will end up reviewing those and voting on each of those and those might address the flexibility issue that you need. I will also provide, as requested by, I think it was Commissioner Tuno or maybe Supervisor Kearney, someone down that end, about a map that is more easily comparable. And I will, I will provide that at some point in time as soon as possible. So, I guess maybe just a poll if that's the, the best direction we could take from here on that.
Yeah, and I think that's what we were saying, Director, is that there has to be some flexibility going forward. Right now, it's hard for any of us to get excited about population growth, but in the last four years, we've seen it going down one to two percent a year. But even if, like your map provided for up to 70,000 and some change in people, plus 40,000, so that's kinda what I was saying, you know, it's not like we're gonna close the county if it gets to 120,000.
And if we see a tremendous increase suddenly, we'll probably be back saying, we need, we need to change things. You know, there's, there's a, you know, just like, you know, suddenly Cliff gets a whole bunch of new people coming to his restaurant, he's gonna have to expand.
And that would trigger...
So, we would need to, you know, we would revisit the plan at that point in time and make changes as necessary.
I could be the, I could be the indicator, I could tell you that.
So, I don't know if you wanted to...
I got a question about that anyhow. Does, is, does this consider the, when it, when we do have decent tourism a year, you know, our, our population increases by two or three times sometimes. How do you, how do you account for that?
The TOT tax.
That's a whole different subject there, Debbie.
That's true, though.
No, I think we, we do need to look at what is the temporary population of the county and how does that affect services? I mean, in some ways, it's positive. You know, there are people that come, they spend their money, they pay property tax, but they don't use the, the services as much as permanent residences. On the other hand, they have other demands, law enforcement...
What services wouldn't they use?
Schools, social services.
Well, maybe schools. But they use sewer, water, you know, police, roads, all that stuff.
So, it's, it's a mixed bag on that. But I, I think it's important to consider that as a part of, you know, the overall review and impact. The next item then...
So, what do we do on that? Are we gonna, just to clarify on the growth projections, we're gonna modify version three and then bring it back and look at it?
I think as we go through the planning commission, there will be changes that will be made. Ultimately, it will come before the, the board and you will get a, a chance to say, this is what we want. This is what we're gonna analyze under the EIR. And, and we'll have more, more opportunity for very specific input on, on that issue. Some of the question was whether or not, I mean, the, the comments, the reason why this was brought before you, because the comments were really on both sides. We've got way too much growth, we've got not enough growth. And I think we're, you know, like I say, somewhere in the middle, we need to be flexible. I suspect that as we go through some of the changes, I've, I've noticed some things that says, well, that, that doesn't really make much sense. Why is that, you know, five acre parcel and it should be higher density? Why, you know, so those kind of things will probably be worked through as we go through the, the land use map, through the planning commission. And ultimately, again, back to the board, you know, there'll be an opportunity for a third round of that, so.
Okay. Is that okay with everybody?
So, I heard some, pretty much as I go, we need to address water. It's very important, but we don't need a separate element at this point in time. The, the water agencies are working on some type of water document. I'd be hesitant to call it a water element. We could incorporate that later on into the general plan. We'll continue to look at water policies in both the public services and facilities element as well as conservation, make sure we can strengthen whatever programs we can do at the county level to protect our water rights and to ensure that there's gonna be adequate water available for the, the growth that's, that may come and when it, when it does come. So...
Well, I'm also considering growth in our industry, which, which our biggest industry should, in this county, should be agriculture. So, that's a consideration, I think needs to be on the table.
And when we go through the resource production element and the conservation element, we can make sure that that's addressed.
Right.
And then, finally, the sort of nuances of what's in and what's out, components of the plan, maybe format wasn't the right word, but the components of the plan. I heard that from some at least, the vision statement's a good idea, maybe not exact language that was presented in 2008. That's something that we can take to the planning commission and vet some more. We'd probably be one of the first things we would take up if, if that's something that the, the board wants to include a vision statement. So, I'm not, I'm not really sure, I don't have real clear direction on that, so I'll defer to you guys.
So, you know, my opinion, a vision statement needs to reflect all of the people in the county? And it didn't reflect me. So, I'm part of all the people, actually. And so, you know, one of my issues is property rights. If anything's gonna be in that vision statement that has, is detriment to property rights, there's gonna be a lot of people that don't like seeing that. So, and there's many different ways of tackling that issue, you know, like maybe some incentives for property owners. That would be a real refreshing thing. So, that's my concern. I, I don't wanna see anything in a vision statement that would make people feel like if they come here, they're not gonna have the rights to their property.
But you'd like to develop a vision statement though? I mean, I think that's the, the question, not specifically what's in it, yeah?
I think it just needs to be groomed a little.
Yes. I think it has a lot of great things in it, but it, it could be groomed a little more.
So, if we could use that document as a starting point and vet it through the planning commission, modify it as, as they see fit, and that would then be forwarded on to the board.
Yeah. Also, I would, I would say on that vision statement, I mean, if, if the board, the rest of the board would agree, is that, you know, take a look at the vision statements of the community plans out there, too. I mean, that's a good, a good reflection on, on, on some of the communities anyway.
I think, yeah, I mean, based on community plans that I can recall, a lot of their vision is reflected here, so, you know, I think tweak it a little bit and maybe there's some redundancy.
I don't think it's that far off. I, I just think that it could be a little bit more friendly.
And I think that was intended when that was presented. It was a draft. There was gonna be further refinement of it, so we're finally at that point where we can do that.
Government moves slow, man. It's pretty hard to, I mean, you know, if we can, if we can, it'd be great if we could run on a schedule. I, I think that we just need to make it a priority. Whatever we are doing with this general plan, if we can get the community, communities together and they can get their community plans ready for the general plan, we can make that a priority and, and get it done. It's pretty hard to set.
Sorry. I just wanted to, just kind of talk about this a little bit. You know, maybe knowing what that meant, add objectives. I mean, could you give us an example of an objective that you would add?
My experience with most of the objectives I've seen in other general plans are essentially restatements of the goals. I haven't found them to be terribly helpful in implementing the plan. I know that we have measurable objectives in the housing element. It's a requirement of state law, it's the only, only element that requires, actually requires to have that. And, and it's like, in that case, it would be something like, we, what we will provide, we'll construct 10 new affordable housing units in the next year, something along those lines.
Hmm.
But it seems like it refines the goals a little bit more there. Might be useful.
I suppose so. The one thing I did do was a sort of a quick review of other plans, particularly most, and it was in the staff report. Out of the 12 plans that I looked at, only two had objectives. And most of these have been adopted in the last five years. So, most of the other counties felt that it just wasn't that valuable. Doesn't mean we can't do it, and we, you know, they probably would provide some value to the plan.
I think it could be useful to, maybe at the planning commission level, have a discussion about what that would look like, you know? I mean, 'cause just putting it here, you know, I think these are, it would be, it'd be good to have a, you know, some idea of what that could look like. Because, I mean, the idea is you have this broader goal, like, you know, let's protect, let's produce more ag in the county, you know? And then you kind of break it down into smaller categories, more specific categories, and then you kind of move forward with that plan. So, you have specific things you're doing rather than saying, you know, we like economic development. Okay, that's good. We all like economic development. What does that mean? And what's our, what's our objectives there? Do we want to have, you know? I mean, that's how I see it. And otherwise, it just becomes way too vague, and we're just sitting here 10 years from now going, we want more economic development. That's, I mean, and I know that the practical implementation is what you're talking about, I think, is that you haven't seen, the use of the objectives hasn't really been utilized in the planning process, is what I hear you saying.
Right.
So, maybe that's just the practical reality, is that, yeah, they look really good on paper, but they just don't happen. I don't know. But I think it'd be worthy of a discussion at the planning commission. Yeah, I don't know what the rest of the board says.
I don't have a problem with a discussion, but the housing element is the perfect example. If you look at the objectives that were on the last time it was updated, very few of them were met. Did you make it too specific where you couldn't accomplish some of the things that you might have otherwise? So, I don't have a problem with throwing some objectives up there, but I would really, my personal opinion is to keep a strong cautious feeling about them before you put too many. It doesn't do anybody any good to set 15 goals and then you can't do them. That's why it's called a general plan.
Well, yeah, but I mean, I think the general plan idea, I mean, I think that's a catchy phrase, right? But, I mean, it is, I mean, it is more than just a general plan. I mean, we're talking about a lot of specifics, too. And so, you know, we need to, I think if we want to actually use it as a plan, then we should have some of these in here. If we do want to just, I don't know, do what, have a land use map and that's it?
But that's what your elements are for.
Right, but in the elements, you talk about what you're gonna do in those elements, right? So, you have, or objectives...
So, why are we not able to accomplish the objectives in the housing element?
I'm not sure, but that doesn't mean that you, what I'm saying is you don't get rid of the idea of objectives simply because you haven't met them. You might want to go back and look at them and go, well, they need to be tweaked. Those aren't the right objectives here. But don't throw out the whole concept of objectives.
I didn't say that.
Yeah.
I said, be very cautious about them.
That's, yeah.
I'm not gonna agree to anything that I don't know what I'm agreeing to. You can say objective, and that's just what it is. So, give me a specific objective to agree on, and then maybe I'll agree on it, or maybe I won't. But it's gotta be specific. Otherwise...
Well, what about having a discussion about it at the planning commission level?
Yeah, I like that. I mean, I think that, again, this is our business plan, and to have some goals and objectives and some timeframes and who's going to be doing it is helpful. I look at it as a guideline. You know, we put it down on paper, and it's something that we can try to follow and achieve and measure ourselves against. So, that's where I'm coming from. And I'd just like to see it vetted at the planning commission. It may become a new point. It's hard to say what one objective might be. I'm looking more at the development of this template, you might say. We want, we want a goal mentioned or stated, and then the objective, and so on and so forth. So, you know, I think it's worth a more discussion about it, and starting with the planning commission.
So, what are you gonna discuss? Which objective?
The idea of...
I think it's the, oh, sorry. I think it's the, I'm looking at the template, you know? This is, this is what, this is the goal. And so, do we want to include objective timeframes, who's gonna do what, and this sort of thing, as a template to follow as we go through all these goals? So, I couldn't tell you an objective right now until we would have a broad discussion about it.
Well, we kind of said some. Our objective is, on the community plans that aren't vetted yet, to have, set the timeframe in.
That's a good, yeah.
You know, a year from now. But just don't overload the thing with objectives that are never accomplished.
Right. Yeah, well, that's a good point.
That's my point. You'll never get there, and basically, the document looks silly when you relook at it.
Chair Edson, may I chime in just briefly? I just want to at least caution the board of, as far as setting specific time limits or timelines to do things, and who's to do what in the actual plan. Something like that could potentially be done in an external policy that is done in-house to keep things moving. But if it's actually in the plan, I would just caution you because obviously, as Chair Edson has indicated, sometimes the wheels of government grind slowly. And so, if we don't meet the timelines that are in the general plan, there could be, you know, potential of us not being in compliance with our own general plan. So, I just want to caution you on that, on that topic, that if you want, you know, to keep things moving forward, it might be appropriate to have it outside of the general plan. But just so, just so you're aware, you know, it's like an internal policy that employees or that the county can use to keep things moving forward, but not actually have it in the adopted plan.
And I would recommend that I come, you know, before you annually and say, here are, here are all the things we said we wanted to do. What are your priorities for this year? What are our resources? What do we think we can get done? I'd make a recommendation of things I think we ought to be pursuing, but it's up to you guys to say, yeah, these are the important things that we want to do. Work on that next, rather than, you know, sort of, not really arbitrarily, but, you know, some guesswork as to how long some of these things are gonna take. My experience has been that we have great expectations of what we can do. It always takes longer to get it done. Other things get in the way, and things we thought were gonna get done within the first, you know, three or four years, eight years later, we're still haven't started it yet.
Very good point there.
But I don't want to get objectives mixed up with implementation measures. I think we're sort of talking about implementation measures here, which are the specific things we're going to do to implement the plan. The objective is sort of this intermediary step between the goals and the policies that probably will help a little bit to understand what it is we're trying to accomplish with this. But in my, my opinion at this point in time is, extra work coming up with those things that aren't necessary.
Okay.
But again, you're, so what I heard was, let's have a discussion at the planning commission, what we could, if we should add those, and...
So, what I heard from county council was that we could still do that outside of the general plan and accomplish...
But I think what she was saying was not about objectives. What she was talking about is implementation measures and timeframes. And objectives would be another higher level of category. I mean, you could have an objective of, we're gonna do this thing in this time, you know, but not, I think there's a separation there, right, between objectives and the implementation measures?
So, an objective might be something like, under, you know, land use and economic development, that we would, you know, create X number of jobs, you know, or that, over the next, you know, several years. We don't know how we're gonna do that necessarily. We have some policies that we hope will help do that, but that would be something we're shooting for. So, five years from now, we look at that, well, did we meet that objective? What are we doing as far as economic growth? Hey, we did it, great. Let's, you know, pursue, keep going on that path. We didn't reach the level of growth that we had hoped to achieve as far as job growth. What do we need to do to change the plan to affect that better? That, I guess, maybe is a better example of the type of objective that we would look at in, you know, in the plan.
Still not within the plan? The general plan?
No, objective, that's the, I mean, that's the discussion I'd like to have at the planning commission. Is this, is this, is this a format options, or whatever we want to call it? I think we should have that, a little bit more detailed discussion. And with Megan, you know, having her stamp approval on it, but even if we don't end up going there, I think, I mean, this is, this is important, I think, in implementing a long-term plan for the county, is, you know, where are we going and how do we get there? And without having that discussion, at least a little bit more at the planning commission level, I think would be a failure on our part.
Well, we'll look forward to hearing the thoughts of the planning commission.
Okay.
Good, we're good.
Alright.
And then as far as the implementation measures, the way it's set up right now, we have a number of measures identified. They don't necessarily correlate specifically with, you know, one-to-one relationship to a policy. It's been suggested that that be done, and that we add the timeframe and responsible department in doing that. Direction on that one, please.
Well, I mean, my thought is that we just put all those into one planning commission meeting and talk about all of them. That would be my suggestion. Steve?
I would, I would agree. I mean, I think, to be able to flush it out there. I think, again, this is our roadmap, and it's our business plan, and, you know, in my world, when you have business plans, you have all of those elements in place. So, it's tracked. Maybe government is very different. I know it operates much slower than business. But I think at least a good, healthy discussion at the planning commission is more helpful, and you can bring back more information about it and explain, you know, from county council's perspective, and, you know, have a little bit more thoughtful conversation.
So, it's gonna hold you up at all?
I, I, I'm sorry, if I hedged that, I was trying to imagine after tonight's meeting, if they could do that in one meeting, to see if all the planning commissioners ran out of here real fast. Maybe that was my thought. I, yeah, I don't have a problem with them settling that out, but take a, take a little slack on them.
Well, we intended to start the planning commission hearings next week. I think these issues probably need to be resolved fairly early on, and I think at least attacking the vision statement would be the first thing that we would do. If not, if, depending on how long our hearing goes next Thursday on the asphalt plant...
Forget it. No way.
We may...
Would this be a good time to ask for a raise for the planning commissioners?
Probably not.
Up to minimum wage.
You get your stipend. Huh? You get your stipend.
So, is that, you got your questions answered?
I think I did. Thank you very much.
I just want to clarify, as far as the number four, just so our office is clear what the direction is. The intention is to have the planning commission discuss all of them, bring it to the board with a recommendation, then get direction from the board, to then move forward from there, correct? Or did I miss that?
Well...
Yeah, that's, I think, what we're talking about, Debbie.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, that'll work.
Can I just want, one suggestion? I recognize that there's a little concern about bogging down the planning commission in this process. My only suggestion is, we're gonna go through the plan, policy by policy, goal by goal, implementation by implementation. At that time, we can decide whether we want to add objectives at the planning commission. We can decide whether we want to put a timeline on a specific implementation. That way, we wouldn't, they wouldn't have to decide upfront. We could just do it as we move through the plan.
My only concern with that is if the ultimate decision or the ultimate direction from the board is to not include objectives, then that would have taken time and energy and drafting and staff time to create objectives, just to turn around and say, we get direction from the board that they didn't want direct, want objectives to begin with. So, that would be why I was, why I was wanting to make sure that staff had clear direction on what was to be included and what was not, so that when we move forward with the planning commission meetings, you don't have to worry about what should we be including and what should we not.
Yeah, and I think it's really important to have that discussion about the structure of the general plan, because unlike Tom, you know, most people don't have that planning background to really, to really know what those all mean. And so, I think the more we discuss it, we have, get a better idea, not only the format, but the whole general plan. And that's why I'd like to have the study session.
Can you take two of them down? Or Joseph, I'm gonna jump up.
No, just for...
I think we're done. So, you got your answers?
Yes, thank you.
Alright, so the planning commission, you guys got that one? Alright. So, that concludes. Alright, so, at this time, I'd like to conclude our meeting tonight. Thank you very much for showing up, and look forward to more of this in the future, I'm pretty sure.
Thank you. Thank you.